I would like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the Towne Star Valley Ranch Town Council Meeting. This is the ninth day of May at 2023 at exactly 7:00 PM. Do you have Councilwoman Danielle?
Yes.
I am mayor.
All right. All councilmen are in attendance and we do have a form. I'll let the record also show that Towne Star Valley and Mill Park, New Wenchwonder are also in attendance. Please stand up for a little bit.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ruled under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is to reconvene from our workshop today. And so can I get a motion to the building? I move the Towne Star Valley Ranch reconvene and regular reading of Town Council. Second? I'll second. It's been moved to second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing now to post, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda. But before we do that, is there anything from the consent agenda that the council would want to forward? Hearing none? Sorry.
Could we get the council table and the chairperson first to the?
Could you scan up here to your name? You don't know where you are. For the record.
Lee Hansen, Plaid 18. Could we move the council table and the persons to the chairperson's?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the council table? Okay. Any questions? Okay, hearing now, do I get a motion to approve the agenda? Is that my turn?
I move the Towne Star Valley Ranch, oh, sorry. Aye, please. I move the Towne Star Valley Ranch to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item is to approve the, uh, is to adopt consent agenda. I move the Towne Star Valley Ranch to approve consent agenda as written. Second? I'll second. It's been moved to second and all in favor say aye.
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 All right, hearing none, post, motion carries. Okay, the first item on the agenda is ordinance 2023-05. This is the land usage, um, this is the third reading, so.
Third reading entitled fifteen, add judgements, chapter 150 buildings. There has been no change since the first and second reading. This is the modification system. Any million or five thousand square feet are larger than a main floor, so I'll have a sprinkler system included. I move the Towne Star Valley Ranch to approve the third reading, ordinance 2023-05, title fifteen, add judgements, chapter 150, buildings as written.
Second? I'll second.
I'll second.
It's been moved to second. Any questions to the audience? Council? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve the consent. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 2023-06, appropriations for fiscal year 2023 and 2024.
Sorry, technical difficulties.
That's okay. When you get there, explain what's going on and what's, uh, changes made.
All right. So.
Second reading.
Okay. So for second reading, uh, we did adjust the property taxes based on information received from the county from four hundred and twenty-five thousand to five hundred and fifty thousand, which changes the total revenue numbers to two million, five hundred and seventeen thousand and eighty-eight dollars. And then on the expenses side, uh, we changed the general administration to two hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-two. Public safety and SML to four hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and ninety-one. Road operations expenses to six hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and four. Uh, wages roads operation to four hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-one. Uh, attorney court and boards to one hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and eleven. And a contribution to capital reserves to six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-five. Most of those changes are, uh, a reduction in the amount, um, allocated for the master plan update and then an increase for benefits for employees. And that brings the total expenses to two million, five hundred and seventeen thousand and eighty-eight dollars. And on the capital side of the general fund, um, that contribution to the general fund has increased to six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-five. And the road rehab reserve, uh, source of funds has just been rounded off to nine hundred and eighty thousand for a total revenue from reserves of one million, thirty-five thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and a total source of funds of one million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand and one hundred and seventy-five. And under the use of funds, we, uh, changed how it was, um, displayed to show the projects. So we rounded off the pavement project for platform five, um, to four hundred thousand. Um, the bridge replacement is actually called out and the chip seal projects has been rounded off to eighty thousand for a total of nine hundred and eighty thousand. And then the change to the reserve for future improvements of six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-five for total use of funds of one million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-five. And on the water side, it's, uh, also the change in benefits to change the water salary and wages to four hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six. And, uh, the change to the contribution to capital reserves to one hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-two. And on the capital side, um, just the adjustment to the contribution from water operations to one hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-two. There was some non-capital projects being cap, being counted in the capital reserves. So that's been updated to, uh, the one hundred and seventy thousand for a total source of funds of four million, six hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two. And under the use of funds, that's where that adjustment was for the Green Canyon tank lining to a hundred and seventy thousand and the contribution to reserves, um, of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-two for a total use of funds of four million, six hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two.
Okay. Um, what are your names? Um, I move the Towne Star Valley Ranch to approve the second reading of ordinance 2023-06, appropriations for fiscal year 2023 through 2024 as written. Second?
I'll second.
It's been moved to second. Um, we'll open this up for questions. Is there any on the audience that have any questions on this? Roger? Not here? Me? Yes. You will.
Lydie Hansen, Plaid 18. Uh, my question was in reference to the, uh, my, just like, the, uh, amount we give from the county for taxes and tax base and your creasement on that. Um, will the rebate, the, is supposed to be issued out by the county? Will that affect anything on the budget number?
It should not, in my understanding.
No, that number that we were given of the, uh, from the county was based on a property assessments and they don't, uh, change what our allocation is based on that. It's just based on the number that they give.
Exactly what they will give us. So the rebate, I'm not sure. I know that they said it didn't, it didn't affect what they give us for ours. I don't know. Okay. Yeah, I'm just not sure. We will find out when we are ready. Any other questions from the audience?
Is this the budget?
Yeah, this is the ordinance, yes.
Oh, darn.
Well, you got it right. Second? We will answer.
Ed Koshka, Plaid 17. Uh, the rebate was funded by the state and they put a, what, a million eight aside before they allocated out. So it should be pretty good shape. Can we get a copy of this?
It's, yeah, it's posted and if you want a physical copy, just, uh, email me or, um, I'll just send it to you in office.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Okay.
Good evening. Good to see you guys again.
State. So the name of the person?
Page large Robinson, Plaid 20, on West Elkhorn Drive. The reason I'm here again is about snow removal and the budget for it. And can we go back to the expenses for the roads, please? I've seen kind of far back look like nine hundred thousand dollars. And I'm going to be here every month until we have snow and land that works because I'm not going to endure another winter like I did last year. And these are the years. And this is your responsibility. Okay, six hundred and twelve thousand. Okay, we thought about this last month and you said this was the summer and the winter sentence. That's not even close to what it is. I've been driving around town and I see the road damage that we got this year. And I'm going to tell you, you probably should have two line items. There should be a summer and a winter or whatever you want to call it. There needs to be deviation. There needs to be separate budgets for these two line items. Road operation expense, that means that you're blocking Peter and paying Paul and summer winds over winter. So I would like to see in here, and I'm only by myself, but it's reasonable and it's logical and it's accountable.
So what would you recommend?
Separate the road operation expenses into two line items. One, summer, go prepare whatever you want to call it. And then winter is the snow removal and whatever is involved in the snow removal. Because I did, uh, this is what I do for a living, I have to estimate. And I estimate that we need to put a million dollars in each one of those line items. And what's left over carries over to the next year. And then create the snow cavilated daybook, right? So let's have a snowy daybook where that money that's remained carries over and we don't touch it. Because I tell you, I've got a pretty big truck and I put my truck to the pedal going up the hill out of my neighborhood and wind slapped me for last month. But I think it's very important that I separate those two lines and that there's enough money in each one of them. And I think we should start with a million dollars in each one. Because just, uh, around down there, see, my, my area has black coats on it and it's that pot.
Okay.
I can thought of those, but.
I appreciate you coming up. I see what you can do, we see whether there's only two federal meetings in there. We take a million for each of those and there's no one else.
I have one more, so.
So. Does it have to include?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Can we pull up legal expenses?
It's right there in the attorney court board.
Sorry. I'm not used to the balance sheet. So, um, why do we have such a high amount of money for legal fees?
Well, it's not just legal, it's court and all court boards. So that's everything.
What is, what is court boards?
That is the cost of, do you want to answer that?
Uh, it's to do with, um, that section of the budget to deal with all of our community courts, um, our municipal courts.
Is this who we pay the people that run these things, like you judge or the clerks? Is that what that covers?
Yeah, and the town attorney.
And the town attorney and the prosecuting attorney.
Who is the town attorney?
Uh, we have two. We have Kevin Boils and we also have Brandon, who's Brandon's missing. I forgot his name, so it wasn't prepared. He's a prosecutor because one is the prosecuting attorney, one is the town attorney.
Which one represents the town?
Well, and what are you talking about?
Who represents the town?
Oh, well.
They both do.
Well, they both do, but we also have liability insurance that represents the town. So there's multiple people that represent the town.
Where's Mr. Benny tonight?
He's on here, he's still not here.
What are you talking about, the citizens?
So, Lydie Hansen explains that we, we do have a neutral approach, but this is the ordinance, so this is the law that we're having.
No, I.
So the line items are new over here because of the time, there's a lot of things in there.
Just something for a little clarity, that's all.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think it's reasonable what I brought to the table here today.
Okay.
And accountant. And are you the accountant? Are you the actual accountant or just you what's in there?
He is the town.
I'm the town clerk and town owner.
What are your thoughts on separating those into line items?
Uh, I think that that line item actually has a lot more than just the roads operations. It would probably be a little more difficult than something that we can do, uh, before the next reading, but we can look into it.
We have, uh, the council is separating out.
We'll look through this, but let's make some changes before the, before you guys all disappear and go away.
And just for the record, we pair a hundred dollars amount.
No, that's right.
So.
John, can you pay?
Yeah.
Pay for the time.
Yep, you're welcome. Okay, any other questions? County council? Oh.
Lee Hansen, Plaid 18. I see you only on the capital side of the general fund, you just have Hartman Crossing. Have, have you totally mixed the Mill Branch Crossing and fixing that, uh, crossing?
We have not.
But you may.
You're right, it's not in this budget.
We may not mention it. So how are you going to do the Hartman Crossing if you've got the Mill Branch Crossing closed without dividing the town in half for?
So we have a public, you're, you're, we have a public meeting on this very item, our front top of there, but I can let you know now that is only 18, that's 7:00 PM.
Okay.
And, um, the council feels very solid that everybody is in public. So that's why we have meetings, other than put that, having that in place, it's been missed your budget. So we have, now.
The gentleman before me had a good idea on some, on splitting the, the cost up for snow removal versus road maintenance. And I don't know how desperate the situation is around those crossings, but I sure think there's a safety issue leaving the Mill Branch Crossing permanently closed. That, uh, to me, that, that's a serious safety issue should something happen and, and just evacuate the town.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Dan, what, what date was that?
That is the 18th of September.
Eighteenth of September.
And we'll get out. All right, any other questions, council? Hey, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion of first, uh, Lydie Hansen. Uh, let's see, um, we have one item that was moved from, next item is the new business, so we have one item that was moved from consent agenda. Um, church. Did you have a specific, uh, question? Council, um, maybe, sorry.
Lee Hansen, Plaid 18. Uh, yeah, I have a question. When, uh, like about a year ago, I signed a payment to a contractor to remove the lean-to's from the response center because, uh, our town engineer said it was pulling the building down. And I see now they are finally, the cyclone has finally been removed. And I'd like to see a full accounting of, of, uh, could we pay him if, if I, if my memory serves me right, somewhere around ten thousand dollars to remove him? And then he only did one side and used town equipment. So now we spent more money more time and I was wondering what the total cost for removing those, um, lean-to's are or what, what it is. And, uh, I'd like to see, also, um, on the council table is, uh, part of the contract with, um, Mid Valley Fire District was that they would pay for heating the response center. I'd like to know whether that occurred or whether the town paid for heating that building? And, uh, let's see, is there one more thing I had? I guess it mostly centered around the response center, at least this time, and to see whether, whether we could get a cost for how much it totally costed the town to remove those.
Um, so I can ask.
And now, now the building ought to be sound, is that?
Yep. Um, the heating has to be paid for within dollars. As soon as we sign the contract, they put that in their name. So we don't see any of those.
You don't see the bill? Do we have, do we have the new fire track?
It's not yet. I mean, they haven't received it yet.
They're not receiving.
It's still on the way now. They're totally naturalized, so hopefully, hopefully it's to act. And then, uh, the other question, um, town clerk, you have that, because that, that included more than just, was the ten thousand just the building present paid?
Yes.
Or did, okay.
Yeah, and that was paid, um, uh, July 27th.
Okay, then we haven't paid him anything else?
So did he do the removal?
He did.
The contractor?
Yeah, yeah, and then the day after, or the weekend. So he did it on the weekend and then after that, um, probably first, it's work, um, fixing the dirt around the building and there was a phone line laying on the ground that they got buried.
A what?
A phone line.
Oh, oh.
Which we found out was the main phone line for the 911 system that's on the ground.
Yeah.
So it didn't cross the town, did it, or did we move that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for asking. Next up on the agenda is the, um, update. So I, I kind of had some really bad news when I wrote this and then later today, I think we're okay, but, um, we've had scouts have done flags for us on our main road on this, uh, or I put fifteen plus years, but boy, this is sitting here, so, um, anyway, and I was notified by the scouts, um, because they're really no longer active, I think in the valley, that they would no longer be willing to do, be able to do that because they don't have any volunteers. So, um, which was really unfortunate because that's really important for our community. Um, during our workshop today, um, we actually had a volunteer come forward and, uh, they want to take over the flags at least for this summer. So, um, it's Nikki Wilmore and the Lincoln County Democrat Party volunteered to do the flags for us this summer. So I thought that that was great that they stepped forward to do it. And then hopefully we can, scouts will come back next year and we'll get more volunteers. But it looks like we're at least covered for this year. So there were nine, seven holidays, I think. Is that what you, you figured out and make sure that they have access to the flags? So I thought that was great. Um, local flooding, so far we're doing okay because it's difficult to, so, um, that's good to know, but, um, I was aware, and if you're not signing up for programs, you can please do that because they're not finding people with their problems in their area system.
Mayor, is there another study that we did on surface water runoff? Would that not be helpful to the public to know where those potential flooding would be?
That wouldn't be, and it is on there.
Is it on there?
Yeah.
I couldn't find it.
It has it written on, yeah. You, um, yeah.
It's another question.
No, I don't, we had that, it's so far.
I couldn't see it.
I mean, well, I don't know, I guess.
But I, but you got stuff over here and you have people taking stuff up.
Yeah.
And me on a hill, the water came into my house, it rains into the rental facility. But if you knew where it was and published it, then maybe people would, would be prepared for that.
I'll pull, I'll pull that out tomorrow and we'll kind of identify some of the areas that, because the actual document, as you know, is massive.
Yeah, but there's only two places.
That shows that, yes, so we'll see.
Potential flooding there.
But that's a good idea, there is. It is on there, so. Um, anyway, but we have a lot of people get bags and fill bags, so I thought that was good. Um, another thing there, and Silverstar was supposed to be here tonight, but not here. So, uh, Silverstar is, um, going to start to build out on fire for our town, for our community. And the one thing they asked me for on the campus, I sent out an email, but they asked for letters of, uh, support from residents in the town. And so, um, we'll give that out and we're to send those in all the right order, but just in case anyone's interested in, in doing that and make sure that you know this. Uh, let's see, and, uh, next one is the Water Project 2021. Uh, that will begin a few weeks per meeting is May 8th, 1:00 PM. And then the Hartman Bridge public hearing is, uh, May 18th, that's 7:00 PM. And that is all I have for the updates. Let's see, um, so now we have the citizen participation section, so I think we have a couple of people on there, I'm not sure. Uh, and there's kind of rules on the minutes and you have to go right here and say your name. There you go. Okay. So the first person on the list is, uh, Rose Dewey. And you want to talk about the treasury report and funding.
Put that, it's under backup. You should find it. First off, um, I want to talk to you about the treasury report. And for a while, there's, there's nothing in here, has any due to file, there's nothing you have to do short term, it's not, that's, uh, it's reported. And I, I have an investment interest in water from beginning, it's my daily, and it's being reported differently. And I went back and I looked at the, uh, the agendas and they're covering the agenda and the council, so this is advice you need, not anybody else. You can only set the, uh, okay and approve either the budget information that's been done by the clerk or do you do, uh, the money accounting, which is the treasury report. You should be, as the council, a doctor knows, an approval in your consent, that's just kind of gone away over time. So that is just number one concern. Number two concern is the reporting that I found, and since I haven't, I don't have time to go back and look at it. But can you room that just a little bit so we show the green arrow on the bottom? Oh, that's good. Now, this is, this is the current report, it's not accepted by you. Uh, I looked at the, the workshops and there was two different times on the workshop that on the agenda we had something to do a train or discussions about treasury reports, accounting, budget, things like that, not the budget itself, how to read those budget reports. Um, and I'm, I'm concerned as a citizen that you're not finding these things. Uh, these are, these are reports you put together so we can let the council look at it and say, this was good or this doesn't do it. And this doesn't do good to me. So I hope it not look good to you. But anyway, the green arrows, somewhere we decided that we're going to take two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the sinking fund and plenty to cash, at least that's what I'm assuming. So the first question I have is, did the Wyoming Department Development Commission authorize you, did you spend that money?
It's not spent.
No, to, to, uh, to use it?
So it was CD. So it was a C D that matured. It was pulled out from the C D, temporarily put into the checking, it moved from checking to the savings where the rest of the sinking fund is. So the only reason it doesn't show in this report is because we received the check from Bank of Jackson Hole on the last day of April and that transfer from checking to, that happened in the beginning of May. So it'll show in the May report, which is the note that was put in the summary with-
Let's drop it down one, just one line. Uh, I went back and, oh, drop, drop down. Oh, I guess I'm saying, oh, I'm sorry. The two red lines. That sinking fund, folks, I don't know that you can use that money for any. We have a signed contract with the, where I'm worried about, it says, okay, a half million dollars designated and reserved in their name only and only through their permission or less than that low, can you use that money? And you're using it, you're not spending it, I agree, but you're using it. There's other money that you should be using for those deposits and not that low. I'm just saying my, my opinion. And so you want to figure that and find out what's going on. Because you show that same thing, you show ARPA funds. And the ARPA funds plus the, the sinking fund, both ones in one reserve, one is, I mean, one invested one place or another. Uh, that adds up to a half million dollars in the old. But those ARPA funds are not usable is the Wyoming Water Development Commission's deal. So I'm just saying, my concern is you're, you're not doing it right now.
Well, let me ask you a question, Lloyd.
Is that my turn now?
Yes, yeah. Um, let me ask you a question. Would you just, because we're not using it, we know we can't touch it, they haven't like it. Would you just label those different type of issues? What I'm trying to do is make sure that the council understands where the money is invested? Because the money still is there.
You know, this is a reserve that you, as, is designated as a reserve for those types of things.
Right, okay.
It says you will use it and only use it for those kind of things.
Right.
So you're not following your own orders by doing it. Secondly, this is even another issue and that's the yellow arrow. The way this report was meant to be is the, uh, first column of money is what happened this last month. And last, this middle column is only there to show you what you did different from last month. And yet if you go back and look at your records on one thirty-one, you show a balance of just half million dollars, you don't even show that line, that yellow arrow's on it. And yet the next month, somehow between that month and this month, you added that line up. That should not be ended that way. You have to enter those lack of modification on those lines so you can show the change and so the public can see the recent change. I'm familiar with this, I'm trying to know where it's at. But I'll tell you something, as far as I'm concerned as a citizen, your responsibility should be to approve it. If you couldn't approve it, you better understand. I will, I will go at it. Don't add any type of tax on an educational basis to show you what would happen. I understand my way. It's your report, it ought to be your report, don't argue enough information, you can put it together, people.
And I think the council decided, they asked the finance board to help redo this report and the other report because they have our time understanding call.
Well, that's, you should have listened.
Yeah, and so I need the commitment, and we got the finance board looking at one back there this July. But nobody would have a new report. But, um, we will tell them that you have volunteers.
Well, I, but these are kind of things that-
Yeah.
Mayor, let me tell you what makes it nervous. Wyoming Water Development, it gave us a huge amount of help to start.
Right.
We made commitments to it.
Yeah, and there's still-
And somebody's going to say, let me see your, let me see your balance sheet, let me see where your funds are. And you said that to them without any explanation or understanding. And those guys, you know, you have them heading to almost a million, one fire, one, one life, something who left on a balance of it. And if they say, oh, wait, you didn't look at your deal, you can pay it all right now. So I just do that for a safety standpoint.
Now, it may sound, I'm sorry, Lloyd, what did you say about paying off right now? I'm sorry.
Say that again.
I didn't hear what you were saying, you said paying it off, I didn't.
If they see that without any explanation, they can recall, they can call the law, a media.
Yeah, so even though-
And we got some people in there that love us and we got some people in there that don't love us. And they would love to end. Like, you hear that, huh?
I don't think they like me, Boyd.
I'm, I'm saying that. I said us as a town. It's all Andy right there.
Yeah. All right. Now, I understand where you're coming from, we've talked, we've talked about this several times, so.
But it ought to be, it ought to be fit to be republished, I think.
Okay, um, I'm sorry, next question. Uh, large audacity. The town, you have quite a thing you want to go about. The town logo, snow removal, and town plans.
So, you know, like, this is a really, it gives us time, but this is the citizens' time. And, I mean, I, I think that should be, when it comes to time up here in this period of time, is, it's redundant and it's whining and combating. I mean, I don't know if you've got it, I'm going to tell you that, but I don't know if you've seen it. Anyways, they understand. You know, keep you guys on your toes. Okay, let's shake those, some kind of dog. Um, you can have us here. And when I come into this time, I'm going to bring up stuff that's relevant. Can you listen to me?
I'm listening.
Thank you. Um, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the document piece that I wrote your all emails about. Because I could have sworn last month, that was the first meeting and I ain't going any too long. But anyways, I just want to put that out there. One thing I want to talk about is, is this being recorded?
Absolutely.
Okay?
It's on YouTube.
Is this being appended to the town council meeting? Is this contained? So, you have to stop right there.
No, no.
That's good, all right, here's the back.
It'll be on YouTube.
All right, so there's a lot of equipment running around our town. And I'm talking cats and brayers and motors. And collect the town to put the logos on our kind of equipment. Because I haven't seen it, right? I saw it on the S and M's truck, but I haven't seen it on a motor that was a renewable or a grader. And so let's, let's show where equipment belongs to the town so that people can see. Yeah, because there's a lot of contractors here. Okay? And once again, I'm going to prove the snow, what's going on with that. Don't, we talked about this last month, I told that here this month, through Congress. So.
I, right now I haven't got anything else to share, unless we have another meeting set with the Congress.
So can we set a timeline to actually have a plan? Because that's what I have to do in my industry. I have doc, uh, deadlines, milestones, things like that. So how about we put a deadline on this? Can we that?
Not the, we, we already got some, we have a plan, so.
I saw what that's, no, we just talked about last year. And it was unacceptable.
Okay, you have?
I got one more item. I got one more item, I know you're not going to like it in this one. Um, so I'm not sure if we have, but let's talk about term limits, okay? I actually thought we had term limits, it's been around to your third time.
Now, that's a state issue, so you need to talk to your representative.
No, let's put it on the record though, right now.
Okay, that's fine.
We'll start here with this dialogue. Um, and I'm going to, I'm going to expand on this because, Boyd, it's good to see you. I, it's been many years. I moved here right after the town came to town. Um, so you actually helped give that, this stuff its own commercial credit?
I'm good with this.
Okay, oh, sorry. So, thank you. Um, why, it's been fifteen years that those have just sat there, all right? And I'm thinking to myself, we had a big plan, it's fifteen years, so why hasn't any business been here?
Well, they're for sale if you're interested in buying them. But, uh, they are private, all that property is privately owned.
Okay, so what are we trying to do to encourage business in here besides adding more fees to documents? To permits? No, that's, what that is, is classic liberalism, all right? Tax the citizens because we can't get any economic growth in this town, all right? I know we have a restaurant, I don't know what we get from the golf courses, do we get anything at all? All right, and so I look at our budget and I also look at the total amount of the budget. I've worked on projects that have a bigger budget than this town. In fact, I'm working on one that's twice that. So let's create some jobs here, let's get some economics in here to stop. Increasing my water bill, like he did, you know, the last few work that I do that. And I went up twenty percent, twenty percent.
You feel, or one, two, or three percent?
Oh, no, mine was ninety-nine dollars, all of a sudden it's one nineteen. That's twenty percent in mathematics. So what are we going to do next month before I come here? Are you guys going to lodge support for the snow removal? And the term limits are going to be received?
Like I said, that's a stage.
Appreciate that.
And, and, and we know that in our tax base, those commercial businesses are not going to help us. We don't get any more money, whether you spend your money in Maine or out, but it doesn't make any difference.
Luxuries of life, I mean, Matt, I mean, you don't have a gas station here.
Right.
But should we be nice and get something to eat maybe?
I realize that.
And besides going up to the golf course.
Right, but I believe that it's the town's responsibility to buy it from-
Oh, no, no, I, I'd be clarified on that too.
Yeah.
But-
We don't know.
Okay, I get that part, that's, that's easy part. So what kind of incentive can the town offer to the town people?
What do you have to comment?
Yeah, just to cover quicks, first off, uh, towns in Wyoming belong to people. We got our revenue based on the number of people, citizens we have. And the, the, the public taxes are virtually not existent, we get it. Secondly, is there have been several, uh, opportunities for people to come into this area here. Uh, I, I can count through the four of them that I remember. Uh, we had a service station, quick stop, uh, you know, all those kinds of things. Uh, little grocery store, we had a physical therapy, the only, uh, it was one of them.
Uh, it was also going to be a gym.
Oh, a gym, an exercise, you know, right, the only, but remember one thing? Those people came in, looked at it, in fact, there were some of the, they, I apologize, turn that off. So, and I don't know how to respond. Um, anyway, uh, so I'm trying to think, but those people have come in as business people. And they have, uh, mayor, there's two of them that put money down, first one from buying property, we went that far. And all of them have walked away. And the problem we have is we're a destination town, you know, we're, we don't have driveway, drive-bys. We don't have, uh, opportunity like Maine and outlying those other towns. But people drive by and tourists spend their money. We are a destination, you have to come here and spend it. And when they do the economics on the viability of those, we fail. If we could keep the influx that we have at the trail park for twelve months, a year, you know, if we were that big, many of these businesses would have the opportunity to make some money and survive. But right now, everything I've seen is we're, we're not sustained, we're just not big enough. Where do, where do the offers stay? For one, we need a, both can afford.
I, I can't tell you that the owner of the problem is, is not wrong. Um, his daughter-in-law's is probably so.
Yeah.
And so it is, they are looking for a developer to buy all of it, but, uh, right now it's not.
Yeah, Mayor, one of you, you asked the question, what is the town going to set people? Uh, if you look at some of our rates on water, we have the ability, the council has the ability, if there's a person or entity or business that wants to buy something up here and that would be the difference maker, they can waive those, those costs, those fees. Not permanently, but they can give us the initial to get them in here as a incentive. And in fact, this, I'm not saying both of the last two that walked away had been offered those incentives, is that correct?
I, I, what the point I'm trying to make is I don't want to make AJ North my destination for supply, all right?
I am, and we do have that.
No, mine missing occasionally. So, um, so I, this is my background, let's summarize real quick. So can we get town details on our-
Yeah, we may should have, but I thought they were all on there. So, it sounds like they're not, so.
And then, and is, where's, is Jim Robb, Roger still work for us here?
Jim, um, had a nurse to breathe, but he's been out.
Is he okay?
He's even got a good side today.
Yeah, I haven't seen him, right, it's his crap.
Yeah.
And I wish you well.
Way to go.
Yeah. It all worked on the term limits part on my part and we may revisit it at some other time. But snow removal plan, until you come way out here, you're going to see.
Hey.
And it may snow. It seems like it may as well.
Yeah, maybe, our, uh, Mr. Robb, I would say, um, we are definitely discussing it. It is something that we're, us that over and over and over, and so.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, if you, the workshops are where we get a lot of discussion on that, and I know it's not a dick.
It's really hard for me because I work up in Jackson.
And we're trying to meet those online eventually too, so you can always hear them later, like an audio of some work and so that way you know, you get those up so that you can go back, at least you're in the conversation.
Thank you.
Uh, next one is Karen, there.
How should I know? Okay, my first counter that with that eighteen, I'm on the board, I'm just sort of on the ranch. The meeting that you're going to have on the eighteenth happens to be the same night as the board and board meeting. And I know, me personally, would like to be at the bridge meeting. I don't know if it's possible to change that, it's exactly the same time, seven o'clock your time, seven o'clock our time.
Okay.
And there are people that come to that, I'm sure will be really interested in having to-
That's good to know, because I thought we were going to be in one of that today, we're just going to take the time and be in all there, which is not.
Well, I pull a calendar out. My next thing is, I would really like, have a drive around the town or walk around the town. There are several campaign times from the previous campaign that have not been picked up. I personally, I'm not one to pick them up. So it'd be nice if you sent your spouse out, yourself out, or somebody, and pick them up, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, I didn't see much too.
Or go over back.
Hey Karen, if you see some of the water, if you, if we don't see, well, rooms, esophytes, and windows.
Mine and yours. All out, all out there.
Well, I apologize, if, there wasn't any snow, we're picking them up.
Well, I understand that.
We'll make sure that they're gone, that's why this-
But they were laid down in the fall and you go through the snow that, or you're all kind of-
Tell them, tell them to see, whatever. They grew legs. Well, thank you, thank you very much. All right. That's it. All right, uh, I've got, uh, just, um, upcoming events. And that is the municipal court clerks and judges conference, and that is May tenth through twelve, as a follow. Lincoln County E G meeting is June fifth at ten A M, and that's an afternoon. Uh, Arbor Day, June tenth, in, uh, at Foxhorn Park, that's at ten o'clock, everyone. That's 10 o'clock, everyone. Coffee with the mayor is June 13th at 10:00 a.m. Town council workshop, June 13th, 2:00 p.m. Town council meeting, June 13th at 7:00 p.m. And can I motion to adjourn? Second.
I'll say it.
Can I move to second, all the mayors say aye.
Aye.
Aye.